Good morning. We'll call the April third Davis County Commissioners Meeting to Order. Mr. Kester, if you'll lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please.
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Lord, we just want to, first of all, thank you for the privilege and opportunity to represent the people of this county. Please give us discernment and wisdom as we move forward conducting their business, and we ask you all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
For Stanford Pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Motion to excuse Mr. Commissioner Elliott.
We have a motion to excuse Commissioner Elliott. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recognition of veterans, please.
We have any veterans here today? Incognito, let's put that in.
All right, register for public address. Anybody wishing to speak in public address? The registration forms here on the desk in front of Ms. Harris, please do so. Adoption of the agenda. Agenda out of seven D can come off of the agenda that has been resolved. Are there any other changes to the agenda, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
All right, here now, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jason, nobody signed up?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Um, Adam for discussion. Mr. Smith, Mr. Ward, lead off merger of Midway and Gumtree Fire Departments, please, seven A.
Danny to come up, I think you guys are aware, there's been some discussion about Midway and Gumtree Fire Departments coming together, so he's kind of gonna outline what's been talked about thus far, and I think the chiefs are here, um, because there is a process that you guys are involved with, should just come to pass.
Okay, just so you know, we, Mr. Ward and his fellow members there and myself, almost didn't make the meeting well ago with Commissioner Shell as the elevator quit working coming up, so, and we got stuck on the fourth floor, so.
If they fell, I'd catch them.
Yeah. If you're gonna get stuck in the elevator, you wanna have the fire marshal in his group with you, because we wasn't gonna be on there alone. They was, they was coming to get us, so.
Good morning, Commissioners. What we're bringing to you today is a, um, a request for a public hearing to be set on June ninth, um, for public hearing of the consolidation of the service districts of Gumtree and Midway Fire Departments. And, uh, at the conclusion of that public hearing, a consideration for approval of that consolidation, which will include the insurance and response district as well, because we like to keep all those things together and make it effective July first of 2025. Um, I have here with me today Mike Craft, Fire Chief of Midway, and Scott Rude, Fire Chief of Gumtree Fire Department. On their part of the merger, it's really a little bit separate from us. Their nonprofit organizations have come together, and I'll let them speak a little bit about that, answer any of your questions. On our end, it's more of a general statute-driven thing to consolidate these districts into one, so they're all under the same tax rate, they're all under the same ISO rating, and it keeps our fire district lines consistent with our history of trying to make all those districts match the same line, so we don't have a resident in an insurance district in another area that's being served by a different service area or tax district. Um, Debbie, did I miss anything that I?
I do have a quick question. What is the name of the fire department gonna be now, since it's a merger?
The Midway Fire and Rescue Department.
Midway Fire and Rescue. See any questions by the board?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Just for visibility, any additional trainings needed by, for your folks with this consolidation?
No. What'll happen, uh, within the next twelve months, the state fire marshal's office will come back in and they will reinvestigate us, or, let me get this, yeah, they're gonna come back in and do an inspection. They'll give us like ten months, fall of the years when they'll come back in. Since we are a class three, they're a class four right now, they will come back in and get it.
What, that leads me to ask, what's class three and what's class four?
It's our insurance ratings.
Okay.
That, uh, basically for the commercial property, because anything under a class six is all for the commercial property.
This is a mutual agreement, I take it, that both?
We've been working on it since 2017. You know, the state, whenever we had our last inspection, we started talking to them then, seeing what we needed to do. So, uh, we've already had each department in our annual meetings, it's been advertised, it's been discussed at our annual meetings, that we voted on for a merge, so we haven't had any, any body that was against.
It's, it's all for the better of the citizens. Uh, that, our station is strategic where it's at. If you look at this in the overall picture, it'll get better response times for the area of his districts that was at his far limits, then it'll actually speed it up with this merger and all. And then the resources being combined, it'll be better for the service district as a whole.
Now, Casey, I guess, uh, on the county's perspective, we have a contract with Gumtree as well.
Right.
So, we'll have to.
We'll either fold it, or, I mean, they're all similar.
Right.
So, now it would just be amending it probably to, what we're gonna do with the part of the budget is take their value and roll it into Midway's budget.
Right.
Now, there is full transparency, slight difference in the rate, and so the folks in Gumtree, I think it's, what is it?
Point two five.
Point two five of a cent, you know, will get moved over into Midway's side. So, I want that to be clear. And notices need to go out, and I think the tax department's gonna help Danny getting those out to meet the deadline for the public hearing. So, that's, on our side, the main thing is get the budget established once the district gets set, get the budget set and the tax rate set for one district.
So, Gumtree, um?
Gumtree's a point two five cent less than Midway right now, so those citizens, and they're gonna get noticed, I think, is that right, Danny? When these notices go out, they will be not told then?
That, that's correct, um.
You're gonna receive a slight increase by moving in with Midway.
When you say point two five, is that twenty-five cent?
Twenty-five, no, it's, um.
A quarter of a penny.
Quarter of a penny, that's two point five.
Midway's current rate's thirteen, Gumtree's, uh, twelve seven five, so point twelve seven five.
Point two five.
Can you clarify something, though, because what's going out to the citizens is the notice of hearing that we are going to publish?
Right.
So, if we want to put something in that notice that's going to delineate that, that there's gonna be a?
The difference.
Difference in the tax, we're gonna need to amend that notice of hearing to send, when we send it out. Because right now, it's just a notice of the hearing of the proposal to consolidate.
No, and I think that, in full transparency, that's, that's the fair thing to do. Those folks need to be notified that this change's gonna occur. I mean, they may have already known through y'all's public meetings, but just to be on the up and up.
What'd you say the rates were again now? What, what are they?
Twelve point seven five is Gumtree's, and ours is thirteen.
Thirteen, okay. Yeah, I mean, that's.
Some rough figuring, I think.
That's not going up a lot, for sure.
No, I think it's like thirty-seven hundred dollars is what the total income is, so it's not much.
Right.
So, the ones that are, uh, class six will stay six, and the ones that are not will be, um, what'd they say, nine A, nine A or ten?
The way the Department of Insurance looks at it, all residential structures pays a class six. So, your home, it doesn't matter what your rating is, your home is gonna be a class six insurance purchase.
Now, was a, the insurance within five hundred feet of a five or a six outside of that?
It's a, it used to be a thousand foot.
I'm sorry, thousand?
That's what a thousand foot was, but whenever we went from a split rating to a straight rating, we started all water hog classes and all of that. It doesn't matter, it's whatever your rating is. So, you can live.
Within five miles.
Yeah, you can live within five miles, and you're still gonna pay that class six rating, since we went to a straight rating.
Well, that's better for them.
It's a lot better for the taxpayers.
Okay, any other questions?
Just want to quit, just for self-awareness, did, did you have to have the DOI's approval to do this?
DOI gave us a workbook. I sent it to Danny. I think he's, may have sent it out to all of y'all. I, I know, did you send it to Casey?
Uh, I can't remember. I think, it's pretty extensive.
But anyway, they give us a big workbook, things that we've gotta follow, and talking about your contract, and that's one thing. Everything over there has to be, it has to go away. We're not gonna change the name of the building. It's gonna be Gumtree Fire Department forever, but on letterhead, it's gonna be Midway Fire Department. Are we gonna paint the trucks red? No. You know, we're not gonna waste that money. It's gonna stay Gumtree Fire Station, but on the letterhead, through the business part of it, it'll be Midway Fire and Rescue Department Incorporated is what it will be.
Okay.
Well, it's been a long process.
Yeah.
But it's for the better of the citizens, provide a better service.
I'm surprised it hadn't been done before now, I'll be honest with you.
Well, you know, it's something I think you're gonna see in the future. We're all losing volunteers.
Yeah.
You know, uh, I went to work at Midway in ninety-one, that's why they hired me, to get a fire truck out, because they was having issues back then. That's why we have ten full-time employees. You know, our goal when we're doing this, we're gonna put at least one full-time employee in the building, and we're gonna work a part-time employee. I don't want it noted on the news or everywhere else that we're gonna have two people there twenty-four hours a day, because y'all know how staffing is, it's hard to keep, the ambulances full, it's hard to keep, but we're gonna at least keep one man there in that building, twenty-four hours a day to get the truck out. Prime example, yesterday, we lost a structure on Dishar Road, you know, house fire yesterday. Took us four departments is what it took us, you know, we had about twenty-two, twenty-three people. But if we have a fireman to go down, you know, they say it's gonna take twelve to get him out. So, that's the reason we've got to do this, plus like Scott said, you know, our fire district line goes within two hundred feet of that building anyway. So, when I leave here, we're going down to Jason's office. He's got me some maps, and he's done, looked at everything that's two and a half mile circles away from our fire station. And it's gonna really help the response get, especially medical calls, if it's a fire, we're all going anyway. But on these medical calls, plum up to the town hall on, on, or on Gumtree Road, you know, that building is fixing to start running that calls. Where they run three hundred, three hundred fifty calls a year, that building's fixing to probably start running eight to nine hundred calls a year. And it's gonna take a little bit of load off of our end, but it's gonna help our citizens is what it's gonna do.
Gonna spread, gonna spread the responsibility out a little more.
Yes, yes.
I can remember back in the seventies when we had the sheriff's office up there, if any of you guys remember that far back or not, but, uh.
I rode down last one.
That was, that was the sheriff's office up there on the corner, and we spent as much time as the Gumtree Fire Department and the Midway Fire Department as we did at the office up there.
Yeah.
We had a good, close relationship up there.
The only other thing that, that I've got, unless y'all have some other questions, they do have a loan on the building over there, so I'm gonna have to get to refinance that loan. I've been talking to Pinnacle Bank, and we would like for y'all to give us, y'all is gracious, or whatever we need to do for the low-interest rate loan that we've been talking to Pinnacle Bank. So, I'm gonna need that, is the big thing. But that's the only money that they owe is on the building, so we're, we've got to close that loan out, talking to the bank. If all of this goes through, uh, midnight, July one, that loan will become Midway Fire Department's loan instead of Gumtree Fire Station's loan.
So, you need to count, count his action before that time then, correct?
Well, just whatever you have to do on these low-interest rate loans or whatever.
Casey, you know what he's referring to there?
It's the, it's the ones we've done where we've had to kind of vouch. We've sent letters and saying, so if Scott will send me something, we'll get something before you guys, before the end of the year.
Yeah, because, you know.
Not necessarily say we're gonna take on the loan that shouldn't be default, it's kind of the, um, we recognize that they're a service district that generates a tax rate and.
Revenue. Right, that, that's what has to be done on that, because we can save a percent, percent and a half on the interest rates in the way they are now, that's big money.
Just shows them the source of income.
Right, right.
Okay, can I get a motion, uh, for the set of public hearing for April the fourteenth, uh, June ninth, I'm sorry?
Fourteenth, the fourteenth, to set a public hearing for June ninth. This was just the informational piece for you. Well, it's actually gonna be on the agenda for the.
I'll make that motion.
Why can't we just gonna do it now, do it now?
Okay.
Then it's done.
Nothing's stopping us.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, I, I need a public, a motion for a public hearing on June ninth.
Motion.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't usually handle business on Thursday, but that one, that's simple.
Danny, do me a favor, get with them and make sure we do what we gotta do with the contract piece that the chairman asked about, because, I mean, I don't know, I would assume it'd go away, and then yours, I don't know if yours needs to be amended to state such, but we'll figure that out. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Smith, Ms. Baker, possibly, um?
Yeah, Trish was stuck in traffic, but I see her back there now. She needs to talk to you guys about the Traverse system. You guys remember that from when we approved it, um, it was this time last year.
Yes.
Uh, there's an expanded piece of this to pick up child support, so she wants to talk to the board about that.
Seven D, yep. Trish, if you wanna give the rest of the board just a quick, uh, just a quick, this is some, uh, software that we need to make things flow better down at DSS, but if you'll kind of give them.
Yes, so, um, the board approved, um, DSS to purchase, um, and implement, um, Northwood's Traverse program in child welfare and adult services, and that happened, um, late last year, November-ish, um, and staff are using it, it's going really, really well. Um, the, um, AOC is implementing statewide a system called Odyssey. It's an e-filing system, so all of our programs that deal with the courts are gonna have to be electronic. And so, because we already had Northwood's in place for all the other programs, we are asking to add to our contract and implement Northwood's Traverse for child support, so that we can go ahead and get electronic. Um, we will be in Odyssey in October for the district. This is forced by the state, it's not something that we're doing, and Davy and Davidson are going in in October. We have our first meeting with the courts to hear about, um, Odyssey tom, uh, Friday tomorrow, and, um, this is just to get us a little ahead of the game and to be electronic, and it will also make us more efficient even without Odyssey coming, but this just helps us, and it's an add-on to the existing contract. I think the contract is still in review with, with our legal team, but we would also ask that you approve, um, once legal approves, that we go ahead and be able to, um, sign off on the contract and get that going, because they're giving us an extra discount if we can do it, and I know, you know, a discount is whatever the company says it is. But this is a good program. Our staff will be able to do more with the document management, and it, it will just help communication, because we have an office in Thomasville, we have an office in Lexington, the courts, we have a new attorney coming on, um, soon, thanks to y'all. Um, and so we, um, we, we just think that will help us be more efficient.
What's the cost of that, Trish?
Um, so the first year, um, implementation and everything is a hundred and six thousand, and then every year after it's thirty-two thousand. So, we'll just add it to our existing contract. And they provided really good support. They'll come in, as soon as we, um, give them the go-ahead, they'll bring a team in, they'll train our staff, they'll be here on-site with us to make sure everything's flowing, um, and then they're only a phone call away. They have, um, two of our former employees, um, used to work for Northwood's, and they're still accessible to us. Um, they've actually retired, but they're still accessible, and they've been really good. They live in Lexington, so that has been a bonus for us as well.
Does that cost include all the maintenance costs, Trish?
Uh, the first year, it includes everything, and then the next year, yes, it includes everything, um, including some additional, if we, let's say the state creates a new form, or something, we ask Northwood, we need this, that, that includes that kind of thing too. So, it gives us some sort of a, a buffer, if you will, to make sure if there's any changes the state makes. And with e-filing, we expect there'll be some, some impact to us.
Casey, is any of this money reimbursable by the federal government or state?
It is. Child support, we've, we've got a letter ready with your, if the board approves it, we've got a letter ready to send to the state, um, and it just asks for approval. Typically, child support is sixty-seven or sixty-six point something percent, um, so we should get a good bit of that, that back.
Okay, awesome. Any other questions by the board? Um, Debbie, I tell you, I'd like to vote on this one today, too. I know we don't usually do this, but they need to get this software up and running as fast, so putting it off another week or two.
Two weeks, yeah.
Right, it's just, um, so.
She was gonna do a, she was gonna do this first one, the hundred and six, she said?
Mm-hmm.
With, I guess, the net revenue piece to it as well, out of PBB, so if you just wanna make that as the motion, Tim can file it up and get it to Christie to book, so we'll count the revenue as well. So, I guess sixty percent of a hundred, basically, is forty thousand out of your PBB.
And I know you, you don't see the contract, but we, it's the same contract that you've already approved, but it's for child support. It's an addendum to the existing, and I know Adam is in process.
Let's try to make that roll pretty quick if we can, Adam, please.
It'll be, it's, it's, it's simple, because it is, just.
Same thing. Um, okay, does somebody wanna make a motion with the PBB money?
I do. I wanna make the motion, and I wanna thank you for offering the PBB money.
Yes. Well, it's a good, I mean, the PBB is to make us better, and, and I think this will make us better, more efficient.
So, I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
If I can get PBB for the elevators, I'll do it, because you guys, I think, I think the elevators, I think the elevators.
Please, please, work hard on that, Trish.
The elevators are.
I'm looking for us this morning.
Well, let's start wearing your tennis shoes on the way up, okay?
That was to approve the expenditure and approval of the contract?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We can just get us a lift and go down on the outside.
Yeah.
All right.
You should pick her up, yeah.
Item seven nine, please. Uh, federal grants, Mr. Smith, opportunities?
Ms. Chairman, help me, and Tim's here, if we need some help, but I'm, I'm thinking this list you got in front of you, probably do it. Um, when I was out, you guys met with, uh, was it, was it Representative McDowell?
McDowell.
Um,'s office about this community project funding grants that the feds have. They came by, wanted to know, is there anything we have on our list that we'd like to quote-unquote submit? I think it's the deadline's the eighteenth, is that right? Um, so Tim made you this list, because there was a variety of things the chairman and I thought of, which could be, we looked through the criteria of the grants to see what could be available, and these were the things that we come up with. The main one, I think, we thought of is this one in the middle, which is, if we, if we ever get involved in doing anything with this dredging project at High Rock Lake, this appears to me to be a great one to notify the feds we'd like to have funds for. Ms. Chairman, you were in the meeting, I wasn't, but as I understand it, this ain't big money. This ain't, um, maybe, you know, as much as a million or two dollars in a jurisdiction, so even for the dredging, it's not gonna, it's not gonna take care of it. Um, but I don't know how many of these you guys see. The dredging was one, um, let's see. Uh, there was others here. I mean, I think we could submit anything related to, any kind of facility, whether it be a school, um, I think even the, even the detention center kind of brought, got brought up on the list, but some of these, you got the matches there. I don't know how many grants you wanna try to submit, you just wanna put all our eggs in one basket and say, if we can get help on the mitigation, great, I mean, the, uh, dredging, great.
Uh, Mr.
If it ever happens.
Mr. Martin, they was gonna get back with you with a lady's name that would know more about, uh, bigger grants and the source. Did they ever get back to you with that?
I have not seen anything on that. I don't know, maybe they reached out to Tim, because I think Tim.
Tim, did, did anybody reach out to you with the name of a lady that worked?
A lady, um, and I can't recall her name off the top of my head, that I've emailed back and forth to talk through some of these grants, just really to see, you know, what's the real feasibility of these for us, how do they fit? And we've been playing email tag a little bit, so I'm gonna reach out to her and talk a little more detail of, you know, what are our chances for these grants, what do you see, what we'd like to do, does this fit within some of these programs? Um, and I plan on doing that, obviously, before we apply, but.
All right. Can, can you ask the lady we met with, what the lady's name was that she told us about, that would, would be able to handle the bigger grants? Okay, and, and if you don't mind, forward that on to me, because I would like to call her and see what, because we were talking about, they only had one million dollar grants or maybe up to two.
Right.
I said, who do we need to talk to about a twenty million dollar grant, or?
I would assume that is.
Right, and, uh, and she told us a lady's name, and they was gonna call Jason, I thought, or give him that number.
I think that was, um, I think her name was Jackie?
That seems like that was it.
That sounds right, um.
So, Jackie, I think that was it, too. That sounds about right. But just, the reason I wanted to know that for bigger projects, like maybe some help with Thomasville High School, or, you know, we needed some larger grants, but I was hoping that's what our meeting was about, was larger grants, but they said a million, maybe two, so, uh, depending, Any, what's the board's thought on, um, on some of these? When, when is the deadline?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, so we can look over this or think before the next meeting and?
Yeah.
It's never, never really been a practice to get these grants while you're in the process, but it wouldn't hurt for us to look at some, some things that we were in the process of doing, to see if they qualify.
Tim and him's done a lot of, a lot of research on what, what will qualify, so I think between now and the next meeting, anybody can think of anything that?
Our big projects list is anything of school-related, I think, would, could help. The dredging, and I think anything we do with it, the detention center could be a candidate. There appeared to be a section in there about large buildings that could be done at the government. So, anyway, if you got a grant for that, that just saves you cash from having to put into those projects.
The chairman, uh, could probably answer, answer this, because I don't know the answer to it, but wouldn't it, the dredging, a lot of the dredge be depending on what Rowan County's gonna do?
Well, we're, we're thinking, yeah, we're gonna split the cost, whatever.
So, if, but if they don't, I guess they just puck, out of pocket if they don't apply for these grants as well?
Well, I, I've heard they're applying for them, too, but this is a small grant, so I don't think this is even gonna, like.
Touch it.
Casey said, this is not gonna touch it, so they're not gonna waste, they, they, like I am, they wanna talk to somebody in Washington that's gonna help split the, the thirty million dollar cost.
We just now got.
It was dependent on if they were gonna take action or not, so that was my question.
We just now, the, within, I think it's the day before yesterday, got back the engineer's report, and they wanna have a sit-down, you know, Commissioner Shores was the other alternate on that board with the chairman, and, so they wanna have a meeting now between us to talk about this, so we at least maybe have some numbers we could pull from that report to submit for this grant. But they're, your point's well taken. Nobody knows, these, these numbers are gonna be so large, we're gonna have to go to somebody else. This is small potatoes compared to that, um.
The cheapest estimate I've seen was thirty million, plus, uh, thirty percent, uh, contingency to a fifty percent contingency, so it was, the smallest one was like thirty to forty-five million, and then it went up from there on the rep. And then it went up from there on the report. But I do know, again, they're trying to, Rowan County's being told that there's possibly some money in Raleigh. And I'm, I'm being told there's not. So, uh, I guess we'll see how that works out from the state. But then our next, uh, place would be Washington, because again, it's nothing the counties can afford to do on their own, so.
For this size grant, you know, anything we do with a school would be great, I think. Because it just saves us a million dollars of having to put into it, you know, a ca, we, and then our cash becomes available for something else. If that's the way we look at it, or we keep our cash in and we just add a million to the project. But these are great grants for that kind of stuff, um, if that's. But again, I'll let Tim send out the criteria, the basic and bullet points, because it's a long, drawn-out list of stuff to read through. And then you guys can kind of work through, and we'll talk about it the next meeting and figure out where we wanna go.
Do we know if libraries fall within the parameters of this grant?
Um, Tim, help me, did we look at that? And I'm not sure that that one rolled in there, did it?
If it does, it, it may qualify under the, uh, CDBG, but I'm not, I'm not sure, nothing was listed to say. Libraries, uh, have to review the fine details from another agency, if it may fit.
Okay, I'd be curious.
The, uh. The chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I know we had some plans for, uh, some sewer that didn't pan out. Are we okay so far as the funding on that, or do we need to reapply?
I think we're good now on sewer, don't you?
Yeah, because, you know, the, the, we talked about this at the retreat. The Thomasville stuff is, is, is got funds, so it's moving. And this side over here hit roadblocks, not only politically, but when we, you know, there was some land purchases we inquired about, and folks wanted too much for. So it's just kind of fell, it stopped. I don't know that it's gonna happen anytime soon, so, um. But our school plans that we had on our capital list that you saw in March, you know, those, those can be real. Those can be things we can talk about this summer as we get the budget passed and move on. So again, these are great grants, or, or the detention facility. You know, we, we plan on bringing back the jail committee, a revised plan in May to hopefully, you know, bring back this board at some point in time. That may be another project we could submit. I think anything kind of related to that. I don't know about the library piece, Commissioner Mizell, we need to dig on that one just a little bit.
Yeah, just out of curiosity.
I got an eyeball on them, those were the initial, the dredging obviously fell in there easy, so.
How, how about upfit on the school board administration building?
That one, I don't know. I'm, I'm gonna look. I don't know if they would, I don't know if they would count that one as being, uh, secondary support building, not be part of the, you know, direct. But, um, any, anything that would help us save county money on our side, that's another one where I've asked Mr. Cohen for an update on where we are bidding-wise. I think he's got some information to the schools recently about that. So they're, they're gonna be, come and do not long to bring it to us to appropriate the full amount of the funds to fix the building. So that's another one possibly we could look at.
Commissioner Mizell, the, uh, like Tim said, the CDBG portion, I think that possibly could apply on, in terms of with libraries. CDBG is, is a program that's tied to, you have to show a load of moderate income benefit. Uh, so a majority, that at least fifty, I think it's fifty-one percent, has to go to that to serve an underserved area. It's possible that that could go in there, but there'd have to be some analysis that goes with it.
Okay. Uh, what, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, Casey, on this, uh, where there's no match required on technology investments to enhance law enforcement, how do we sit with our, with the sheriff's department on drones? Would that not apply to something that purchased some drones for a sheriff's department?
That's something I'd have to look.
I think that's a viable tool for the future of law enforcement.
Yep, that's something I'd have to look at, Commissioner Shale.
They may already have some. Do y'all have drones?
Y'all have any drones?
Sure. Commissioner, y'all did approve, so we purchased two drones. Um, obviously, it's not what a lot of agencies are going to, which is the larger ones that have.
And that's the ones I was thinking about.
But we did purchase two with y'all's license.
That's the smaller ones, right?
Yes, sir. Uh, besides, I know they've got the four corners of their county to where it's, it's, they're sitting in a room like this, and they can cover the whole county with, but their, their expensive drones. So that's the new thing that Winston is talking about, going to those Greensboro, because they can actually get the calls quicker than a, than an officer.
Yeah. Yeah.
By just setting it up off the top of the building and going.
I'd like to see that checked in, too.
We'll check into it.
Check with the sheriff and see what their needs are.
Ten-four, all right, well, we'll talk about this, uh, finalize it at the, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. All right, where are we going from here? Um, license agreement between the museum and, uh, Leonard's has been pulled. Update community reinvestment funded program?
Yes, sir, I've got the post from Daymark here. You got an update, I think it was in January, February. And then there was some discussion about revising kind of the reports, bringing forward some effectiveness stuff and the cost. So I got Heather here, um, along with Billy, and they can kind of walk you through the revised reporting thing that I think they're gonna show on the screen. They've got some additional information, if that makes sense. So I'm gonna turn it over to them, go ahead.
Hello, good morning. My name is Cheryl Salt, I'm the Senator Director of Outpatient Services here in Davidson County.
I'm Rebecca True, I'm a Regional Program Director.
Uh, good morning, my name's Kevin Williams. I am a director also at Daymark, and I supervise two of the case management positions.
Uh, as Casey said, we had a lot of feedback last time, so we have taken that back and made some changes in the dashboard that we use. Um, during the presentation, you will see some changes, but not all, so we're still working on some. Some were quick fixes and some, you know, kind of take a little bit of, of program development, which is way out of my league, but it takes some time. So, um, hopefully next time, we'll have a lot more changes. All right, so as of right now, all five case manager positions, um, that have been allocated are field. Um, all of the case managers are cross-trained. And just as a reminder, we have one case manager that is, um, allocated to the city schools, which is Lexington and Thomasville. The other, one more is to Davidson County Schools. Um, we have another one that is allocated to the court and the jail, and then two at DSS.
So I, I gotta, let me stop you along the way, if that's okay, okay? You said we got one, uh, for the Lexington School, right?
Lexington and Thomasville, they're combined city schools.
Lexington and Thomasville, and only one for Davidson County?
Mm-hmm.
What's the, the student ratio? Because I, I would think Davidson County would have way more students than just those two school systems.
I'll be honest, I don't know the, um, the count of the, the students. But I will say, all of them are cross-trained. So let, let's say that the Davidson County, uh, case manager gets overwhelmed with cases, then the other case managers are gonna step in and help. So they're always gonna help each other. That's why we cross-train them.
I, I, I'm Billy West, I'm CEO of Davidson. I can answer some of that. That was the way the money was allocated. That was just all the money they had, and we were trying to take a dollar and make sure everybody got something. That was the charge we were told to do, so that was the program we had.
But you kind of understand what I'm saying, I mean.
You're talking about, uh, a number, I don't know what the ratio is, but it would be a lot different.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking it's four thousand kids maybe in Thomasville and Lexington, and fourteen thousand in Davidson County, so.
Well, we were, we did what we were asked to do there. We were told this is the money, and everybody has to get something. So what we thought we'd do is do the cross-training. Uh, the Lexington, the Davidson system, though, does have a number of social workers and counselors that the other two school, school systems don't. But that does not solve your math problem. Your math problem is a real math problem, so, just a good catch.
So just because it was allocated that way, don't mean we don't need to work and see if we can't change that, you know? Um, so, and make note of that, if you will, Jason and, or Debbie or whatever, and Casey stepped out for a minute, but. Okay, I'm sorry, we, hang on, Trish, come on, yeah?
Well, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
So if y'all remember, um, Sand Hills had provide, well, before, when we were in Cardinal, we had all these issues. And then when we went to Sand Hills, they provided somebody in place. Then when we went to Partners, Sand Hills was already paying for some of this. And DSS was very intimately involved in it, so I feel like I need to speak up. But, because DSS, um, most of the kids that would probably need these services are probably involved with DSS at some point. So DSS has one allocation of these positions. And then the jails, you hear about the jails. So we felt, like in our conversations, we didn't have mathematics behind us. But we felt that with DSS and law enforcement, detention, detention center, that we would have covered a good many of the people that would be referred to the services. And then the schools got the other two, basically. And so that's sort of how, but this is money that Partners is providing that may or may not go away. So, um, but that was our ask of Partners. And then they did a second program for us, um, which Kevin is over as well. So we actually have two people, and that ask was, so they're doing crisis management for us. They're really in the board. I know Karen and, and Todd have heard this, but they are there. We've called them, we've had situations where, um, it's almost like a standoff. Parents are refusing to, um, give up a child, and there's very active law enforcement. And we've called the crisis person to go out. But the CCA person, the other person who's part of the five, is also supporting. So I didn't want y'all to think that there's not any services being provided to the schools. But we felt that when we talked about the allocation, DSS was really strong, that we wanted one. And we, we felt that detention, and, and they're doing great work, the court system, uh, they're really helping move, move people on. But we felt we were covering many of the kids that were in school anyway. So they were getting it from both angles. And I just wanted to share that, so you wouldn't think that we just picked a number.
And, and it could be a, a different reason for that, Billy, as well. You know, maybe there's a bigger need in those two school systems compared to the services needed in those compared to the Davidson County. So, you know, the numbers don't always have to meet, I just kind of like to know the explanation.
Hold on, I mean, the math behind this is, is, uh, is important. So I think you're on the right track. You'll see some of what Trish is talking about in the data.
Yep, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, if, if I could for a moment, um, Trish kind of mentioned that there are two separate case managers at DSS. I supervise both of those. Um, you'll notice, um, page two, that it talks about the new DSS crisis program. Um, if I could, just talk about both of those case management positions for a minute, kind of compare and contrast those. Um, there has been the DSS case manager position for a while, um, that is filled. I've started supervising that over the last few months. Trish referred to that person maybe as the CCA person, that's pretty accurate. They're embedded at DSS, they help coordinate a lot of CCAs, mental health assessment, coordination of services, parenting, linkage, they do a little bit of crisis work. Um, they work a lot with the foster care unit, permanency planning. I say permanency planning, I'm old-school, so I still say foster care, so forgive me. Um, but that position has been there. Um, you'll see in the data, those referrals are up. We are so appreciative of the collaboration of Davidson County DSS, Trish Baker, Melissa Hill, all those wonderful workers and social workers. So that program is going well. Um, give you a little bit of a baseline with that program to kind of explain the DSS crisis program, which I know that you are aware of. Um, that is a new program. Uh, we hired for that on December second of twenty-twenty-four, and went live on December nineteenth. So we tried not to waste any time getting that person trained. Um, that person is very passionate with a lot of experience, um, so they were able to hit the ground running. That position is pretty unique. Not only do they do everything that the, uh, DSS case manager does, but they're also on-call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So anything DSS were to need, any hour of the day, they are available. I am backup, as well as my supervisor, Courtney Wagner, is backup for that position. We have helped, um, we're always available. Um, probably the idea behind that position is that families don't stop needing help at five P.M., although not every physician can work around the clock. This physician can. So they also help link with services and do a lot of CCAs and provide parenting support, but they also do crisis work. So they're going out, like Trish said, if there's a standoff, we have been involved in, in one of those already. Um, if there's a removal, if a parent or child has escalated and will not calm down, if there are threats, if they anticipate, uh, serious mental health or substance abuse issues during initial call, that worker and myself are going out during the initial CPS investigation. Uh, whether that visit would be at ten A.M. on a Monday, or two A.M. on a Saturday. I've been up to one of those over in Thomasville just a few weeks ago. Um, that position is really amazing in that DSS can call and get that mental health support for those clients and those families. It's unique, and it is going very, very well. Uh, you'll see in the data, um, that person is already working with fifty, fifty-one, um, individuals. We hit the ground running, uh, December nineteenth, we got, uh, five referrals that day, and came on over. Um, both physicians are embedded here. That crisis, crisis case manager is here five days a week, um, all day, unless they're with a family member, um, out in the community. They also do that crisis work. And again, myself and the, my supervisor support that, because that's a lot of work for one person. Um, so we are definitely out there, you know, with those individuals. Um, I think what's important as well, um, is to give you a few examples of how maybe this position has actually helped. This will help families to avoid calling law enforcement. If we can go out there and help de-escalate a family, we may not have to call the sheriff's department or Lexington PD to come out. That way, we don't waste those resources and we provide the appropriate services. Um, we're helping the families that may have gotten so escalated in crisis that ends up in involuntary commitment, or emergency room, or we're at the magistrate's office. But we're able to go out, this position, and help provide services to de-escalate the situation, to hopefully avoid those situations. Similarly, um, they provide support to foster parents. If you have situations where a placement could disrupt on a Sunday, um, this past Sunday, uh, the case manager was out there for six hours at a home. Because the child was running away and would not calm down, but rather than call law enforcement or try to do IVC, we went out, and after six hours, we didn't have to do any of those things. And we're able to preserve the placement. This, of course, I must mention, the DSS social worker is with us each of those times. They are there with us all day, Sunday, um, at two A.M. in Thomasville, they are there, the department. And we're on the phone with Melissa Hill and Trish Baker as well. But those are some of the examples of the good things that it is doing. Um, unfortunately, I can tell you, you know, that we go out all the time. We're here all day, we're embedded. Uh, I, I come here to DSS throughout the week. I can tell you all the times that we go out after hours, and it's multiple times a week. I can tell you the types of things I believe we prevented, which is voluntary, involuntary commitment, law enforcement. Um, I don't have data to see how many of the situations would have asked, actually escalated to an IVC or to a placement disruption. But I can let you know that we are there, and I think that is probably helping quite a bit.
And that's, and that's what we're looking for, is the data that you do serve. I mean, so is it twenty times a week? Is it fifty times, uh, a week? I mean, that, there's the data I think we're looking for, is how many people you're serving. And, and Billy, to go back to the, to the schools, two schools in Davidson County, I'd like to see the numbers that each of these caseworkers, and, and maybe you have that, or I don't know if he supervises.
So we're gonna show you this, and, uh, what we're doing with this, the vibes of progression. Uh, first of all, you got, you know, some ties to this money of what we have to report. Then we have what you guys would like. And then we have what our I.T. department can generate, but how somebody can't handle it.
Right.
So what you're gonna see today are some numbers, I think, that will get probably seventy percent, and I'm throwing that number out there, uh, more than you had last time, of what I think you, you were looking for. And from there, I think we can certainly easily drill down to what Kevin was talking about. How many people per week? I mean, we could probably geomap it, if you wanted to see that. Uh, the numbers that are more difficult, because they are how, it, it's our semantics versus what you say versus what the state says, is open and closed cases and completed cases. What does that mean? I can go to several people at the state, several people in our own department, and you'll get a different answer for that, because it's been a different answer since nineteen ninety-three, when I came here. So, so you're gonna hear about that, but we're gonna, we're gonna get feedback from you. We're gonna take it back to I.T., our I.T., and we're gonna start drilling down on what it means to us in Davidson County.
And it, and it's pretty simple, you know, no matter what the state does, what we do, open case. No matter what the state does, what we do, open cases, closed cases, you know? Um, our case is still working on Trish has to do it. We look at those numbers every month, you know, on, on her caseload, so.
The numbers you'll see today, if I'm not mistaken, you'll have, uh, assigned cases or active cases. You'll see those. You'll see closed cases, then you'll see completed cases. Well, what does, what does closed cases mean? Well, that's what we need to drill into. Those are normally people that may not be receiving treatment right now. But we're not going to put that case on the shelf. Cause we know integrated testing comes. We know dads coming home. That may not always be an easy thing. We know they're going to be probably coming back versus the closed. It's pretty simple. The person moved away or the, they got their power cut on and that's all they needed. Uh, they didn't go into DSS custody and that's the whole goal in the first place. And they didn't want services after that. So that would be your, your close. But I'm going to let these guys talk about it. And I'm sorry, I'm going to sit.
And one, one other, one other quick question. Who supervises the two caseworkers for the schools?
Me.
You do? So, and, uh, have you compared the numbers to what, what each one of them are doing to see?
You're talking about the active cases?
Right, active cases.
Um, yeah, we have them in the, I'll go ahead and skip forward if you want me to.
I mean, you can get there. I just wanted to know if you had that. So you can get there. I'm not trying to mess you up, so, okay.
Yeah.
I'll say one thing before I wrap up. If, uh, I talk a lot, so I apologize. Um, we do go, the average, the rounded average after hours calls since December 19th is four per week. Is the number of times they go out at night or on the weekend. I just wanted to provide that. It's, it's about 4.3 technically. I did it, um, at the end of the week last week, so I could have that for you. And the only other thing I wanted to say is you may find that the, um, crisis position has a higher number of active cases. I think, um, that of course is because how versatile the position is. That position is being called out at night and on the weekend. And in such use at this time, I just wanted to kind of note that for everyone, you may notice a small spike there. I think that is, uh, pretty logical that that is why that has occurred. Very interested over the next three, six months a year to see where that position goes. If it has spiked and stays there, continues to rise. But it is so versatile, I think a lot of the, the workers are using it extremely often. Thank you.
Quick question, Mr. Shale. You say you got four, you have four calls a week. Is that correct? I hear you right.
Uh, yes, sir. We have, um, four after hours calls that we participate in on average per week.
I'd be interested in knowing from where. If it's the sheriff's department, is it the police department? Is it DSS? Is it the schools? So that'd be one thing I'd be interested in knowing where are most of these calls coming from?
Yes, sir. And I can, I, we can make sure we get that. I will tell you that they are, um, coming from DSS and the family themselves who are already DSS involved.
So it's DSS per, uh, even if it's the family, the family is referred by DSS?
Yes, sir. They're all DSS related. Uh, we do offer our number to the families who are involved so that they can call us directly, um, to make it easier if we're already involved, so we can help to preserve a placement or help deescalate over the phone. Um, but they're all DSS related.
And you're right, Steve. Something else I, I would like to see is location, pinpoint, so we can see.
Yeah, probably.
So we can see where it's at and what it's doing. Okay. Yeah, sure.
Billy, uh, now this is the pot of money that's coming from Partners that we had coming from Sand Hills. Um, and can you, am I right? Uh, this special, special pot of money, not just all of it?
I'm not sure. I think it's, I think I can answer that. Sorry, Billy. I think this is a separate program they're funding Partners.
Oh, the, the DSS.
This is the crisis piece, right?
Yeah, the crisis piece.
Yeah, so this is another program.
Yeah, this is another program. And can you, can you state, uh, how much money is involved in this, in this program?
The numbers, we have the dollars.
Okay, all right. Cause I thought everybody would be interested in my.
Seems to me it's like 500,000 or something.
I think that's where the other one.
The other one was 500.
Everybody gets confused because there's multiple. They started this one just here recently. I think it's the last year, so they've got the cost for that. Now, while I'm here, let me just insert this. I mean, Partners has asked me, they've got some carryover funds for this program that they think they're going to have in this fiscal year. And they, after this, we'll, we can talk about this amongst consensus. They'd like to, for us to know, even though they're paying for it, would we like to continue this and carry those funds over? So just keep that in your mind as we move forward and it's coming.
And that's why we needed these numbers because again, if, if we don't see success here, maybe we need to do something else with those, those dollars, you know? So.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, so this is just the trajectory of the program. Um, when it started at the end of 2022. Um, you'll see there's been a, a quite bump at the end of, or during January. And I think that a lot of it's the crisis position starting, um, in those numbers, um, those referrals coming in. Uh, so this slide is just the total referrals to date since 2022. Overall, we've had 315 clients, uh, that have been referred. And just to make note that even though it's a client referred, we work with the whole family. So we could have touched more than one life there. Um, for Lexington City Schools, you'll see it's 57. Davidson County, 25. Thomasville, 15. Uh, the regular DSS case management is 94. Uh, the court, 73. And then the crisis, um, position is 51.
So that's in like two and a half years? Is that the timeline?
Yeah, since the end of 2022.
So 25, uh, from Davidson County in two and a half years, is that?
Want to go back?
Yep.
15 from Thomasville? Okay.
I'm going to be honest, we have, we have some social workers on JCPC that are with Davidson County schools. And they were not aware that this program existed until we mentioned it at a JCPC.
That's right.
So I don't know whether it's just, could be lack of communication. Maybe it's something we need to get Dr. Slate involved in.
I agree with that a hundred percent. And that's what we've been saying all along, that the right arm don't know what the left arm's doing.
No, I want to.
The right arm don't know what the left arm's doing.
So I remember, I don't remember what you're talking about. I think Heather had presented. It was a year or two ago. Now, we did, um, when we began this program, we went to one of the social work meetings in Davidson County and kind of presented there too. Yeah, did a kickoff meeting.
Good. And we also did supplemental virtual meetings to make sure all the social workers and counselors knew about this program. The cases that they are referring to us are the most complex and dangerous. So those numbers are low because the amount of time and the amount of work that is going to go. We're talking about families that are homeless, that have no place to go, kids living in cars. These are the type of referrals that get sent our way. The school counselors, the social workers have exhausted their ability and now it gets turned over to us because they don't know what to do. So while those numbers are low, they're very high when you think about the man hours that goes into supporting these families that are in crisis when they come to us.
And, and Ms. Shale, just, I think it's unfair to assign that to day mark. Because they run day marks. The schools, we need, we need somehow another, Billy, maybe you can figure out how, how we can do this best. But we need somehow to reel all these, uh, these providers in or, or destinations like our school counselors or whatever and to reel it in. So we got a program and we're not operating individually, going off in our own directions, having the things that could come to us. And we got people out there that don't even know anything about it.
Well, I'll, I'll say two things. When this got started, it was a big push by the commissioners at that time to make sure we didn't have 2,000 kids run through this program and everybody got a day of service. I think there was a real push, so let's have a, and if we treat 10 people, we want to see those 10 people, you know, no pun intended, find their inner child, so to speak, you know, get better. And so that was the push. And so that is why we're targeting those. The other piece is you're a hundred percent right, Commissioner Shale. Um, when we met with the school systems, they didn't know anything about this program. And when I say anything about the funding, the money, any of this, I don't know why you're here. I don't know about how we're going to use you. So we, we've been dealing with that. Thank goodness for DSS. DSS is kind of the omnipresent because they're dealing with that kid. They've got that report on the kid that's living in the car. Now, they also happen to be in the Davidson County school system. So that's how the Davidson County school numbers probably are as high as they are. And so at Thomasville, it's, it's DSS. And that's just speculation on my part. I don't think that much.
But, but 25 kids in two and a half years? That don't seem like a lot to me, you know?
Well, I mean, you can do whatever you want to with funding. Um, but, you know, I think, uh, as we drill down with these numbers, you'll see a lot of those kids either didn't come into care or they remained in a placement in care. And I know when kids do come into DSS care, I mean, I don't know how long they stay. But I know when they're in our facilities, they stay a long time and it costs a whole lot more than what we're talking about here. So, um, you know, maybe we should look at costs too. But we're looking at, do we keep some of these programs?
You know, sometimes costs don't mean as much to me as what we're getting for the.
But that's the reason for the lower numbers.
Right. You know, yeah, but still 25 or 15 out of Thomasville. And I know that's, uh, it's a pretty needed market, so, yeah, go right ahead.
A quick question here.
So while it was one referral, that may have been a family of five with a mom and four children. So we're not just assessing the immediate child that was referred by the school system. We're also making sure mom is linked to behavioral healthcare. And she's got a two-year-old that she needs supplies for, she needs clothing for, she needs food for. So we're also helping with the other children involved, which is why we have to.
Well, it could be, but again, if, if that's the case, then that number ought to be higher. So you ought to count the mother and, uh, the other siblings or whatever, you know? I mean, if you're providing, if you're providing services for them, but don't count them. If it's not, if you're not dealing with them and just a child, then you need to count the child, you know? Would be my opinion, but I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just a question here for the, the school referrals. I know we're kind of talking about the numbers here. Were their initial, I guess, forecasts or estimates of like, hey, this is kind of what we're expecting or this is our goal? And do these fall within the sort of forecast or expectations? And if, if there wasn't sort of forecast for, for things like this, does it, is it similar to other school systems of our size?
It exceeded it.
Okay.
So I'm going to go back to Commissioner Yates. When we started this, and, and where we've done this in other locations, we wanted to count it by family. That's how you get the number or the referral and the identified person. Where we have done it differently and came in and said, there is 1,200 people getting surgery. We then have had some criticism. We really didn't have 1,200 referrals. We only had 300 at the time. So it comes down to how you want to see it. And so what I'm hearing now is we might want to say, we had 300 referrals and we have, but it served 2,000 people. So you differentiate, so I get that. In going into this, it was, this is the money. This is the number of people you can have with the money. And we want to make sure that we don't just run people through. We want to treat the system. We want to treat the family. So we, the forecasting was actually low, if I remember correctly. It's very low because a standard caseload for say a care manager for Medicaid is around 50 or 60. What is it now?
I don't even know.
Yeah. Well, that wasn't going to be the case here. It was actually, I think I remember someone saying, if we have even, uh, someone with 10 people, as long as they treat those 10 people with robust services, so they don't stay in the system or come back in the system or, or become bored of bombing the system. So when you talk about forecasting, this number is actually higher.
No, that's good to know. Like I said, that's, as we can, you know, I, I don't know when I'm looking at this, whether it's, it's low or high because there's numbers. And so I wanted to have some kind of pointer reference to compare it to, which is why I was curious about the forecasting.
The sausage was made a certain way.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago.
And I don't, I don't know that we ever seen any forecasted numbers, to be honest with you.
I don't think the schools knew.
No.
Because Mr. Shale and Commissioner, uh, McClure was in the rooms when we, you know, remember we all pulled everybody together? But to be fair, that was three superintendents ago that did no, you know, where we already got.
I think Fred would agree to school system told, they were all in.
Yeah, they were, uh, you know, they had no, but they had no clue what, who was going to service this thing. And I remember, I remember we telling them, listen,
Yep.
don't run 5,000 people through this thing just to come up and tell the board you did 5,000 people. I'd rather you serve 50 kids quality and have them stop being absent from school, stop getting them behavioral problems, grades go up. Then you serve 5,000 and we can't tell the board what happened.
Yeah, don't purposely overload.
Right, especially with only $500,000. We knew there was going to be no more money than that. So it was maximize the money against the effectiveness, the results.
And truthfully, I think, you know, with these, and you may have it on a, on a follow-up slide, I don't know. But, uh, let's say, uh, the DSS 94 there. What percentage of those 94 are mentally, considered mentally ill? What percentage of those are considered family breakdowns? Where you, where you have, what are you dealing with? Are you dealing with a, a kid who's mentally ill and, and you can't do anything with him? Except, uh, uh, put him in a home somewhere or facility somewhere? Or are you dealing with families that this drug, drug addiction runs rampant in the family? The kid has no parental guidance whatsoever? I mean, I think we, the public needs to know that. How do you deal with it if you don't even identify it? Uh, you know, that's been my, my problem, you know, throughout, not, not, not just in this, but, uh, in all phases of how we deal with opioid addiction and stuff. We're, we can just throw money or something, but if we don't have a direction, it's just worthless money.
Okay, and you had a point.
Just one point that I thought that you brought, brought out that's so important to remember. If, all right, you've got a family of five and you don't, and, and there's total chaos. But there's one, one student, you know, that we're trying to help or whatever. The thing about it is, is that whole concept of, of, of making the whole family work together, you know, and stay out of our system and, and flourish in the world. And I, and I think that takes, you know, that takes, you know, more time to do that many people. And I think that's the point that you're making.
I think, is it fair to say, cause I don't know, I'm over so many, I was in Harnett, I've got to go to Harnett after this. So, you know, it's just a lot of things. I'm going to make sure I understand things. So DSS, those are kids in DSS custody, correct?
Um, either in custody or they're investigating.
If they're investigating.
Yeah, they've had some kind of contact with them.
And so the answer to your question, Commissioner, they're almost 100% of those 94 people would be in some kind of family breakdown, mental health, substance abuse, already adjudicated, used in play. And our goal at that point, I think, would be either to maintain their placement if it's in DSS or hopefully not to be in DSS. And, uh, if they do come into care, help DSS find a placement. Cause that's not always the easiest thing to do, uh, for some of these kids. And the crisis, I think, overlaps. It can be, it's DSS initiated, but it could be existing kid in treatment and, uh, investigation versus.
And there's oftentimes we get referrals from like DSS and the school system in the same week. And so as far as adding it to the program to count the number, we just choose one. And usually if they're DSS, we choose DSS because they have the most contact with the kid. But we still report back to the school and collaborate with them. But there is a lot of overlap.
Uh, Casey, do you know the population in Thomasville school system and Lexington?
Yeah, it's, um, like 3,000, but I'll, let me double check for sure.
You know, Billy, I just kind of look at numbers, okay? And to see if, in, in my business to see what's, and I'm thinking we got more kids in the Thomasville school system than we do Lexington.
I'm sure we do. Thomasville came to that original meeting. They weren't sure why they were here, but they came. Uh, I had to make several calls for the Davidson County school system. I had a wife that worked in the Davidson County school system. And she said, no one understands this program and, you know, pushing it. I think it was just something they didn't know it was coming at the school level. I think the board knew.
So you know where I'm going with it, right? You know where I'm going with it? Those numbers look out of whack to me and.
Thomasville City Schools is about 2,300.
2,300.
Compared to Lexington, what?
Oh, let me see.
Maybe Lexington is just as big.
It's about 3,000 as well. All right, it's about 3,000.
You got 57 in Lexington and 15 in Thomasville.
I do want to add, at the beginning of January, there's the Davidson County social work meeting that happens. And so my case manager went back to that meeting and presented again just to, you know, if there's overturn in the school, they may not know about it. So they went and they presented again. Um, we also got in contact with the Thomasville City Schools recently. And about two weeks ago, they went to one of their meetings. Um, I think consisted like admin staff and social workers. And I was told one of the social workers come up and said, yeah, we've got all these referrals, we're going to send y'all. And they haven't sent them yet. So we're going to follow up with them, but they know about the program where they are. So we're gonna follow up with them, but they know about the program, where they are available. Um, we'll reach out, just remind them. But we're trying to make efforts to make sure that everybody knows about the program.
There's also, um, and this is a variable I know for Lexington. We treat a lot of kids from Lexington. They are bringing people to us every day outside of this program. So these numbers may not ever re, it's just location. We physically are close to the Lexington City School System. Um, there's, I know there's two kids coming into that, I need to talk to you about that one. Uh, that had issues earlier, uh, over the weekend. So I don't know if that skews some of the numbers too, or maybe that drives some of the numbers up. I don't have the answer to that. But, but I'm a numbers guy too, and I see exactly what you're saying. And it's a balance between how much money there is versus how robust, I mean, how intensive do you want the program to treat the whole family? Um, I think there's no doubt the numbers are more. But I think we undershot, actually, good, bad, or indifferent, uh, what we thought we would be bringing in, just because everybody wanted to make sure people got an intense service. And, you know, don't overdo it. Okay, well, we won't overdo it. I don't think fifty-three, fifteen is overdoing it, and I think you could do a lot more. Or, that's what I think. I don't know, I'm not in your shoes, but, and I know Kevin's bouncing my porch on a kid that did not go to DSS custody. Uh, but he lived down the street from me, um, so...
And, and I don't think there's a commissioner up here that don't want to help these kids. I mean, that's why, but we want to make sure we're helping those kids, you know? Uh, and what I'm looking at, it looks to me like you could take one caseworker and do Lexington, and one caseworker and do Davidson and Thomasville, and still not have the caseload of the one that's working Lexington.
And, and you could, if this were your normal, um, TC, uh, what do you just call it? Care management program, absolutely. You're not gonna work with the family, you're gonna be solution-focused. We'll get your power cut off, we're moving on to the next situation. We're not gonna be hanging out.
Well, and power turned on, can't you call Trish and she take care of that? I mean, we got, we got pro, we got programs in DSS for that.
It's not always that easy, and I'm using that as an example. We try to get people touching DSS. But, um, yeah, if this were your normal program, you're right.
And like I say, we have programs for that, that, uh, that actually help with the power bills and fuel bills in DSS and, uh... So anyhow, and, and one case that I'm familiar with, uh, in DSS, you talk about families. Uh, a friend of mine is helping this one child, but there's no help for the family, because they don't want any. You know, so you, you can try to help the dad and the mom, but they're not taking any help. So you can't really count that family, because, and this is a homeless child that was sleeping in the car, you know? So, um, so again, that's what I'm saying. I don't want y'all to count the family if there's no help going to the family, because this is a situation where I know there's not. It's just, it's just the child and, and not the family, so... Anyhow, all right, thank you. Uh, any other questions right now, at this moment? Y'all good?
Okay, I just brought up the active caseload, since we were kind of talking about caseloads. Um, and so right now, the Lexington City Schools, they have eight active families. Davidson County is nine, uh, none for Thomasville City. Um, the DSS is thirty-three, the jail in court's twenty-six, and then, uh, crisis is fifty. And so kind of what we've been talking about, treating the whole family, um, you know, I meet weekly with my case managers, and some of these families are calling them every day, um, checking in with them, you know, if they're working on different resources. So even though the numbers may be low, they're doing a lot of work for them. Following up, looking for resources, seeing what they can do to help.
So there's no open cases in Thomasville right now?
Not right now, mm-mm. All right, I'm gonna go back one, just 'cause this is, um, let me go back. So this is for this quarter, from January first until March thirty-first, which is just the other day. So this is the total number for the families that we served during that period of time. You'll see it's eighty-seven families, uh, none for Thomasville. We did not get any, uh, referrals from Thomasville Lexington City Schools. There were six, Davidson County four, and then you see DSS is quite high, and the courts is nine. And so these are just new referrals on top of what we've been talking about.
A change in the courts, because it used to be the courts were a lot higher than that. Have they stopped with, uh, making it part of the sentencing structure of a person that, that they have to go to Daymar for treatment, under the probationary terms?
Yeah, the case manager that's involved in the course, I know she, uh, goes to Judge Terry's, um, courts a lot, and he does make some referrals. Um, I'm not sure if they can mandate them to come to Daymar, but suggest it, and that's when I think she steps in. Yeah.
Well, that's about the only provider they can go to. And that's where they end up at, is at Daymar. I mean, I've been around the system a long time, and I know that.
We're the free one.
But I, it just seems, I thought, I thought it used to be more, you know, more from the courts than that.
Yeah, I think it was a little higher in the past, but I can talk with her and find out. We may need to change, which...
Would everybody they refer necessarily go to this care manager? This is straight detox.
Are you talking about the court?
Right, right. They would necessarily have to, if he said, you need to go get substance treatment.
Usually it's part of the probationary sentence.
But they wouldn't have to go to the care manager.
She would, well, she would probably enter them and make sure they get to detox, because even though they say go to detox, you know, there's... So she would follow them, yeah. All right, we'll go, we, uh, just talked about the active caseloads. Uh, Billy was speaking earlier about the closed versus completed cases. I will say that, you know, the families come to us and they have a lot of unmet needs. And sometimes we're able to help with some of the needs. We create, you know, there's a lot of barriers with some, especially housing. Um, so it's just a very subjective answer. You know, do you close a case if you've not helped all the needs, but you're like in that barrier where you can't move any forward? Or maybe you've worked with a family for a long time and they've kind of, you know, fell off the radar, so to speak? Um, we may close them and then reopen them when they resurface. Um, so that's why the numbers are kind of different. I just want to, so closed does not mean that it was unsuccessful. All right, um, so each time our case managers, uh, speak with the client or the family, there's four questions that they ask. Um, and I'm sorry for the small writing at the bottom, but the first one says, how would you rate your ability to deal with daily problems today? And so these are the answers that were collected, um, from the clients. And you can see, um, there's forty-eight percent saying much better, uh, six point four, a little better, and about the same is forty-one point fifty-seven. Um, and then a little worse and much worse are smaller percentages. The next question is, in general, how would you rate your overall health today? Um, excellent is the forty-six percent, very good is four, good is almost forty-five, fair is three, and poor is one.
And this is a survey of, uh, how many people?
Um, it's everybody that, e- each contact. So they may have multiple contacts with a client, you know, throughout the week, and they're gonna ask these questions each time.
And these are conclusions, not when they entered the program, but when they...
Yeah, correct, it's just at each contact. To kind of also get a feel of like where they're at, because one day they could be really good, the next day really bad, and then vice versa. Yeah. All right, and then the other two questions that are asked. Um, since last contact, have there been new academic or behavioral issues? Um, so yes answered twenty-three percent, and then, uh, seventy-seven percent said no. The last question, since last contact, have there been new charges or new legal involvement? Um, eighteen percent said yes, and then eighty-one percent said no. So I think those are pretty positive figures.
Billy, can you go back to that just for one second?
Oh, yeah.
Can I, Ms. Chairman, can I just really, I like this. Go back to the other one.
Okay.
What catches me, and this needs to be tracked over time. So like we do with our HR, you know, we've done this with our employee survey, where Tony comes in here and shows you what's been, what catches me about this one, though, is this one over here. The orange bar, your, your ability to deal with problems daily, it's about the same as the blue bar. It's gonna be interesting to see where that orange bar goes. It's about the, you know, about half the people in this program feels like their ability to deal with stuff, even after they've had some treatment, is about the same as it was when it came in. I want to know, if there's your, if we can get that number to go down, we're gonna know pretty much everything we need to know. But if it starts to go past the blue bar, these programs aren't doing anything.
So let me ask you this, you ask them these questions, or do they take this survey?
They're asked, and then we enter them into the...
Can we start emailing them that survey?
We can look at that, yeah.
And that way we have more of a, um, I guess, a scientific number. We know a hundred people took the survey and, and we know, because again, I, you said three hundred and fifteen people done this? Or however many that fully serviced?
Yes. Yep, and we can get those numbers for next time.
Do what?
Participation engagement might decline if it's via email. It does. Versus, it's over the phone right now.
Oh, you're talking about the contact, yeah, in person, over the phone, yeah.
Watch out.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, we can set it up. Yeah, there's definitely different things we could look at to get that.
But I do like this, and it, I mean, albeit it's just starting, right? We just incorporated this into this quarter, but it's gonna be interesting to see how these numbers... And we may change these graphs and add more to them or do whatever, but I like the basic premise, you know?
And you're right, Billy, the iPad's great, because somebody's not gonna tell you a lot of times face-to-face.
Right, they may be shy, don't want to say something or whatever, right.
I mean, there's been times in my, I had to say it was good and it maybe wasn't, you know?
The only problem is, it's going to have to be anonymous.
That's what I'm saying, on the iPad, they can type whatever they want, and the survey goes...
The return address, or it's gonna identify who that...
Not if it's a survey, but we do that through the...
Anonymous survey?
Right.
Still in person, so it's...
Right, yeah, I like that.
I was kind of nervous how this would come out, really, to be honest with you. And we, we talked about this last winter, I was a little, Billy, I should be honest, I was wondering how this would shake out. But now that I see it and kind of, it's, it's helpful, at least to know, and it'll be interesting to see the trends and this stuff as we go through.
These are all good, I don't want to make any more work or go back and do another contract number. But I'm more interested in getting with Trish later and looking at, um, you had, and I'm making this number up, you had twenty kids come into care, and you had problem placement five of them. How was this, was this position able to help you with the five? Only three of the five, or two of the five, or none of the five? And you tracked that per quarter. How many kids came into, got the crisis service and maintained their placement? You know, we had a hundred calls for crisis for placement disruption. Seventy percent of them stayed. That's good.
Yeah.
Three percent of them stayed. We're spending a hundred thousand dollars, only three percent stayed. I don't know, not that one placement went to a three hundred thousand dollar a year placement, then, well, that one percent was good. Those are the numbers.
Right.
I want to get to the dollar success.
Right.
The sooner-later partners or somebody's gonna say, I don't care if this person came down a Victorian.
It wasn't worth spending that much money on to get in that place, right.
So that's what I'm gonna get to. But I mean, this is good.
You're never gonna be able to track enough stuff for our appetite to be able to see it. I mean, it's so, whatever you...
Well, I want to track enough stuff where people continue to feel comfortable with asking questions and come with the data to give.
Right.
Because we can make some changes. Might just send our IT person up there, beat him up and fill him in.
We worked in yesterday.
You know, you guys want these numbers too, because you, you want to see your results, you know? I, I would think, I'm sorry, Fred?
When you was talking about, uh, doing the survey on internet, are you still want to do vocal?
Well, they said iPad, and they'll just give the client the iPad, and they can type in, I mean...
The problem is, we found out during COVID that there's a huge bunch of these people, especially, um, in, in housing and things like that, that's not gonna happen. They're going to the library to pick them up or...
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, and I think we'll have to do it like we do a lot of our other stuff that are, uh, electronic-related.
Right.
We know who the people are that converse with us by email all the time anyway. You can send them a link, they're gonna do it, they want to tell you. And we know who the people are that aren't gonna do it at all, and you're gonna have to walk in there and hand them something and tell them to click, and let them do their clicking. And then there's gonna be some percentage you can't read, you're just gonna have to sit down and read it. And that'll be a much smaller, but what we're getting to is a better number.
You know, I, I like the iPad thing, because then you know who it is. And if you didn't give them the service that they felt they needed, then that gives you some information too, you know? I mean...
Well, we can, uh, we can do it a couple of ways. We can know they're in the program, or we can keep it anonymous, and so...
Well, maybe anonymous, may, yeah, I mean, but you see what I'm saying there. Anonymous makes it better, because they'll give you the true answer. But the downside to that is, you, you don't know who you're giving good service to and who's not. I mean, if, if you're weak somewhere, you want to know, so you can go to that person and go, tell us where we're, we're not, tell us where we're messing up in, you know?
This is why, um, this is kind of a work in progress. I feel like we're in a staff meeting, and y'all are part of the staff saying, this is what we want to know, what about this? Because you can take this in a lot of different directions. And there's really not a program out there that we can say, you know, so-and-so county has this model, and we just pick it up and we do it. This is kind of, we're, we're working on this to be, it kind of the first of its kind, uh, that I'm aware of.
And maybe we'll have the model for everybody else, you know?
We'll see, we, we've got a model right now of questions, and I think this is a good thing.
Yeah, they built that dashboard from the ground up in twenty-twenty-two, so, um, us making adjustments along the way. And so they've done a lot of work, but we can continue to make adjustments.
It's a big improvement over your presentation of last year.
Thank you.
Um, the next one, what was the next one? That was one I was import.
These questions or the next?
Uh, the next, going up to the services, because that was one of my questions. So housing is your top need from referrals?
Yeah, a lot, yeah. So when, um, whenever we get a referral and the case manager connects with the family, they ask them a series of questions to identify what unmet needs they have. And so, you know, the housing may just be unstable housing. It's not that they're, you know, totally homeless, but just unstable housing. Um, maybe they're not able to afford the housing that they're in, and they need to, you know, find other places to live that they can afford. But housing is the top one that we mainly get, and it's...
So, so let me ask you a question here. I think DC Connect, is that not one of their things that they do as well, as far as housing placement or whatever?
Yeah, so they're very comparable. They do basically, I think, the same thing. They'll look for housing, um, opportunities and help fill out applications and that source, kind of helping the client walk through the process, because it can be very...
So do y'all refer to them when a housing need comes up, or how do y'all handle them?
Um, no, my case managers have connections in the community. Um, we have talked with DC Connect, they've come in and done a presentation for us, just to see if there's collaboration. Um, but we kind of do a lot of the same thing.
These patients are gonna be a whole lot more labor-intensive than a lot of those DC Connect folks. They're gonna see a lot of our general population. People getting out of detox, people, and I'd say, we can, we connect them with DC Connect, vice versa. They go back and forth. These people right here are in a specialized program. Uh, I will tell you, one of the more labor-intensive ones, that residential psychiatric placement, one point two. I can't tell you how many times I'm called in the meetings, like I have magic, yeah, because some kid has been in, not here necessarily, but some kid has been in a DSS lobby for two weeks. Uh, we've been able to replace most, I feel terrible for Trish when I, I just got nothing for her, and she really is having to put somebody in the lobby. But I've seen a hundred fifty, two hundred placements go out per week, following up, doing new assessments. You know, one person is just managing that, for that one point two seven percent, before we finally find a, find a place in Arizona. It's in Arizona, there's a whole nother nightmare.
So let me ask you a question, is that not done typically, though, through DSS and, and a service like Daymar, or either, um, I guess, um...
The psychiatric residential part?
Well, just the placement, I mean, placement. I mean, is that not normally through the course of business?
But when you've got a kid that is stopped, stuck, DSS lobby, emergency room, uh, sitting in a training center, that they're gonna let out, because no one goes...
Oh, I know, I mean, we've been dealing with that for four or five years, so...
Those kids normally end up in this program. And where we don't have this program, those kids normally end up with me, Heather, one of our docs, and we're on the phone with Stanley County till the cows come home. But thank goodness, we have some people here that can just dog this, stay on it. Because it's more than, when that, when that, when that car stops moving, so to speak, that kit that stops moving to the system, uh, it really becomes, you're gonna have to start reaching out to the state. You gotta start applying pressure. We got them in the Bronx, and that sounds great, but it's at Christmas, it's not even July yet. You know, so it, it becomes a nightmare. And so there, that is some labor-intensive work, for very little gain. You feel like you've won the lottery when you finally are able to do it.
Okay, so health and safety's next, uh, can you give me an example of that?
So an example would be if, um, maybe the family or the client's not connected to healthcare. Maybe they don't have a primary care physician, uh, maybe they need a dentist, they can't afford one. Um, safety is, do they feel safe in the home? Do we need to look for a domestic violence shelter? Do they need therapy for maybe... Safety is, do they feel safe in the home, do we need to look for a domestic violence shelter, do they need therapy for maybe, um, you know, uh, domestic violence that they've experienced in the home, so that's kinda in that category.
So, and the third one, food, wouldn't that just be handled through DSS and, um...
Um, so we reach out to a lot of food pantries to help, um, clients with food, also make sure that they're signing up for, um, food stamps they may not know they qualify for, reaching out and other resources in the community to make sure they have food in the house.
The other part of that is keeping, I mean, DSS is strapped in, in every county, and I think this is the same county, the same way, and this takes the place of that DSS, having a DSS worker just to constantly engage with all these needs. And even when we bring someone to DSS, that it's clear that they're not involved, they get assistance from DSS, it, it is, the whole goal was to relieve some pressures.
But it still has to go through DSS anyhow, right?
Other way, and depending on the case.
Right, more than likely. Okay, all right, any other questions by the board here?
Okay. Uh, the next one is how many clients we've linked to, um, comprehensive clinical assessment, CCAs that we've done, so as a total, it's fifty-three. The outcomes are to the right, so what we call the disposition, so, um, the community psychiatric inpatient hospital, we referred four clients to outpatient services, which would be like Daymark outpatient, um, services forty-six, residential psychiatric two. And then the bottom is whenever the clinician sees the, um, client, they also do another screening of the HDO, SDOH, um, questionnaire, and so they identified a hundred fifty-six needs out of all of that. And...
In fact, I will tell you from an outcome, not too long ago, almost most of those folks would have probably ended up in your community psychiatric or residential psychiatric. Not because they necessarily needed it, just cause that's where you could get your assessment, your workup, figure out what's going on, it's kinda like saying, I have a stomach ache, and instead of going to your PCP and getting an acid, you go to the ER to make sure you don't have appendicitis. And that's what was happening in a lot of cases, and so this gives an opportunity for somebody to say, yes, you could one day end up in a psychiatric facility if we don't do something about it, but we're not, we're not even close. So, you end up in an outpatient or referred just for some resources, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, it's a good point, thank you. All right, and the next slide is some, uh, financial figures to go over, and I just wanna make note, this is just for January and February. Um, since March just ended, we didn't have enough time to pull the numbers, but when y'all get the report at the end of the month, it'll have January, February, March in it, and it'll have the breakdown. Um, so for the Davidson jail slash court case management position, now this is, um, the salaries, the office space costs, the office supplies, all of that is just a grand total, so the ten thousand two hundred and fifty. Um, you'll see that the DSS crisis position is a little over twenty-one thousand, um, the regular DSS position, eleven thousand, uh, Davidson School Case Management, fifteen thousand six hundred and eight. Uh, Lexington is fourteen thousand six forty-six, and Thomasville is five thousand five twenty-four.
I'm interested in knowing how, uh, with the school, uh, portions there, if they don't know about it, why are we spending so, how do we end up spending so much money on them?
Cost of your positions.
Huh?
The cost of your positions, your, your FTEs.
If you're not getting referrals from the school, where do you get your, your people from to, to have a position to examine?
Well, we have referrals from the school.
I thought you just said they don't know anything about it, well, okay.
They don't, uh, not that I, not, not as much as I think they should, but they know something about it, we've got a handful of referrals from Davidson. We've gotten some referrals from Thomasville, we don't have any now, but that doesn't negate the fact that we still have an FTE there, so, um, I mean, theoretically, if you got zero referrals, as long as we kept the positions, you got the expense, we'd have to just end the program.
You, uh, an FTE, you got an FTE on site there, ready to go?
We have an FTE.
Or has he called in and referred to a student?
That splits the top, depends on which one you're talking to, Thomasville and Lexington split a position, is that right?
Mm-hmm, they do, so it's split.
So you have an FTE, and that's how the expenses were broken out.
On site.
Well, when I say on site, yes, they're, they're physically somewhere, either in the Lexington City Schools, in the Thomasville City Schools, or they're at our office or in a patient's home.
I'm just, I'm just confused as to how the schools are unaware of this, how you're getting referrals?
With any referrals.
It's gotta be one of two ways, Billy, either the schools know about it, or they don't know about it, now we, you, and we've talked about it and said that their schools don't know about it, do they know about it or not?
They, they have some inkling, so here's how, here's how it went down, the, you guys allocated the money. The school board, basically, someone had a conversation with somebody in the county office, I'm talking about Davidson County Schools. We couldn't get any response. I called the county office at Davidson County Schools, I said, let's, we got this money, we had a meeting, they were crystal clear to me, they knew nothing about it. What are we supposed to do with these positions? Thomasville didn't show up, Lexington showed up, but same thing, what are we supposed to do with these positions? I thought everybody knew about the positions, I thought they were the ones clamoring for the positions. So that was a long time ago, so fast forward, so when I say they don't know anything about it, that's what I'm in, and fast forward to today, the social workers, the counselors, they do know about it. I don't know how frequently they use us, like, right now, Thomasville obviously doesn't have an open case, I find it hard to believe with their population, there's not a kid...
Yeah, me too, that's, that's hard for me to believe.
Um, I do think, they're going, you know, having a lot of DSS kids, there could be a Thomasville kid in there that's involved with DSS, so they're counted as DSS, but still, the numbers should be greater there. Um, if the numbers are greater, we'll be coming in here with other, with, with other problems, we'll be saying, look, now we're getting a whole ton of referrals, this is what we want. We're not gonna be able to hold on and give us, you know, without more people, you can't get the same intensive service, and but maybe that's okay, maybe that's okay, maybe we move to a different solution focused model of care management, cause there, there are models of that out there. Uh, but this is what we have today, they know about it to a degree, cause we're getting the referrals, uh, so we have the expenses, and that's where the expenses are breaking out.
Or you could share that Davidson County caseworker with the other two municipalities.
Certain, we certain...
Instead of adding more people, you could do that, cause I'm looking, by your numbers, it's about two hundred dollars per kid for the, for the Thomasville and Lexington service, and there's six hundred and twenty-four dollars per kid for Davidson County kids per service, you know? Or I may have that backwards, um, scribbling here, but, um, cause you only got twenty-five kids out of the money there that you're showing us for Davidson County, so... I don't know, I just want it to work, okay, either it works or it don't.
I, I hear you.
You know, either it works or it don't.
Well, we're gonna figure out what, what you got, what's important to you guys, uh, in that, I think we're drilling that down. Um, we'll have more information today than we had last meeting that we can give you.
You know, not, not a lot of bogus numbers, you know, just good numbers that we can actually look at and see if this is working or not, you know? Cause I'm sure we got other things we can do to maybe try to make something, if, if this don't, and, and, don't get me wrong, it's not, not you guys, it's just, when I see the participation here that's being used in some of these, somebody needs to be beating the ground going, come on, you know, I mean, do you have any kids for us to serve or not? You know, with Davidson County school system, like I say, yeah, you might've went there the first time three years ago or two and a half, you gotta go back, I mean, I, I gotta sell my company, okay? I mean, I gotta get out and put boots on the ground to try to sell my services, so, that's just my take on it, um...
Well, I will say that, we do that, here, we're gonna have to redefine the intensity, which I'm fine with, but this gr- same group is crystal clear to us about, don't have two thousand people running through this program.
See, I don't remember that, okay, so I, I don't, I don't remember that.
I, I, I don't think we ever put a limitation on it.
You know, I just, I want good services provided, and, and again, if we got duplicate services, DC Connect, like I say, they take care of housing, so, or they told us they did, so I, I think Commissioner Schell said this before, we got three or four different programs doing the same thing, you know?
I think that is a perception, and I think if we hold on to that tight, we're gonna end up hurting ourselves, I think that is so true, if Daymark down here, we decided we're gonna have a housing specialist for all the patients who walk in the door. We will be duplicating what DC Connect does. I think if we said, we're gonna take the kids involved in this program, and we're gonna not worry about housing there, we're gonna refer those to DC Connect, I think it's gonna get very complicated for that family. That family's gonna have a whole bunch of people touching them.
Okay, let, let me tell you this, it's the difference between a kid sleeping in a car...
Right.
And somebody needing, uh, treatment at a psychiatric ward in Arizona.
Right.
Okay, so you don't need to compare those two, two together, you know, so, I, I'm saying not every case is for DC Connect, but some of them are. Does that make sense?
It does, and I think DC Connect is getting us, and I think if we...
But because me and Trish talked, and I don't remember what the levels are, but there's like a level one for the other board members, a level one, level two, level three, for the, for the need, right, right, of, of what they got, and those cases don't need to be a DC Connect period. You know, they need to be handled between you guys and DSS, but the rest of these, it's sleeping in their car, and there's a lot of those out there, sleeping in the woods, uh, not necessarily, I don't know that there's any help for some of those, cause that's where they wanna be, you know? Uh, but anyhow, all right, um, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead if you got something to finish, uh, again, I just want good numbers of somebody that, that I, that I can feel good that we're spending money on and helping. Um, that, that's just me personally, I, you know, I wanna see these kids helped, I mean, and we just seen one the other day, sleeping in the car, that thank goodness, there's a person I know that's tuck them into their home, you know? Um, so any other questions? All right, thank y'all very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Before Billy and him, thank y'all for coming, Billy, and, um, so, back to kind of, we are a little bit on a timeline with Partners asking us about rolling over funds for the crisis, the one that initially started talking about from the beginning. We got one more information meeting before July, well, yeah, May, is there something you guys would like to see, you know, there, there'd been some discussion about some date, I think Billy can pull some of, like the geo mapping for the kids, um, that the chairman spoke about, I think that can be pulled with the addresses and things like that. Is there something else we can bring forth in May to let Partners?
So this is for the original money?
This is the, no, the crisis management, the one that they started after the fact, they've got some funds left over they wanna carry forward to continue.
So how much, how much is those funds?
Uh, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
A hundred and thirty-nine from when?
From, I guess this fiscal year that would carry over to next fiscal year.
Um... You talking about DSS crisis management?
The crisis management.
I would, my suggestion would be, and of course you've been carrying, or I'm gonna talk to this more than I am, is Trish needs to outline what her needs are, and utilize those funds according to that.
And, and that's my question, what happens when we carry it forward?
It would continue the program, I think, sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Kevin Williams.
This gentleman kinda manages, that initially spoke about, that's the, I call it, I'm doing this from my sin, and I have to remember everything at like a third grade level, Billy, I can't remember stuff no more. It, it's the eyes and ears to help back up DSS is what I call it, now, Trish, is that, is that too simplistic, like a second grader way of looking at it, but it's, it's the help for DSS to keep eyes on families, cause she doesn't have enough people to keep eyes on everybody in the community, kinda for it.
Right, but isn't that money funded every year?
It is, he's asking me, what he's doing is the right thing, he's asking me at the, as we're coming on the end of the fiscal year, do you wanna continue it? He's doing the right thing.
So this is, all this is, is about continuing, right? It's not about additional money that's...
Yeah, yeah. No, 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 yeah, right, he's saying, do you wanna continue it, if not, I'll stop it, and then the board, he's wanting y'all's input even though the money don't flow through y'all, he's wanting the kinda your input on it, which I think is the right thing to do. Uh, because they started it and Trish utilizes it, but I mean, they're, they're wanting, they're wanting to know if we're gonna continue.
So you said carry over, so to me, that meant funds that was already there that you're carrying it over to the next year, that's the way I understand it.
Yeah, he wants to continue the funding, and he's got funding left over, he wants to know, do you wanna keep it going, or do you wanna stop it and do a whole different thing?
So we pay a hundred and thirty-nine for that per year?
They pay a hundred and thirty-nine.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, it's, it's our money coming to us, basically.
Well, he had, no, he had some that's paying toward Billy's, Billy's got two staff members and some operating costs that's eaten up part of it, so what's left, he's saying, I'll continue the program if that's what you guys wanna do, I just kinda wanna know by July, et cetera.
So what does it cost a year to, for that program?
Is that the case management?
The case, the crisis management.
Crisis, um, let's see.
And so y'all, both programs are really initiated, DSS was a huge driver in the first program, and the second one was exclusive, our app, because of situations that we had last year... With the crisis, the vacancies, the drug overdoses that we were seeing, and our staff just can't handle it.
I, I remember all that, yeah.
And the level, and so that's why we need mental health experts with us, and they're doing a great job, so, I know we've got, you know, some feelings about, you know, who's doing what, and, but they really are supporting us, and so I, I want you to know that, that these were driven at the DSS. I mean, we, I really was, to Partners and to Sandhills, we need this kind of support, and they were, Sandhills started the case management program for us, and then Partners was gracious enough to keep that up, and then when we had some money that seemed not to have been used last year, they allowed us to implement the second program. And we, I mean, we're really getting benefit out of that as well.
So that was the unused money then, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay, so it's coming back around finally.
And now, we're advocating to continue both, um, that, that's all I wanna say, they're beneficial.
Thank you, Trish. But positions, not intensive laws, if they, get the money, is what I would do, and Partners, as long as they allocate it to you, and you come out here in October and you say, I wanna do something different, they're not gonna, they're not gonna...
They're gonna work, they would work with us, yeah, I mean, if we can declare it, and then if we change our mind, I, yeah, he's doing the right thing by asking, he's being very appropriate, I think, by saying preemptively, Casey, what would the board like to do?
And that's fine, just find out how much it is, okay, and I don't like voting on anything that I don't know or discussing.
Billy, if you can send me the total budget for that.
Till we know. What the cost, it, it seems like I remember five hundred thousand for one.
It was about three hundred and some thousand, because it ran out of our budget. I don't know if it's increased, but the original was three hundred and fifty-two thousand or so.
Three hundred and something, and, and maybe with this additional one, it tugged it up to around five hundred, the best I remember, but anyhow, if you can do that, that's, uh...
You can send, just send me the budgets for both of them, that'd be fun.
And I'm sorry for not knowing, I want you to think I don't know what we do, I got, like, a hundred and ten million dollars and all these little pots, and I don't...
We, we got like a hundred and seventy, uh, how much, Casey, so?
And it's all little pots, Billy. If you, just send me the budgets for both programs, case management and the other one, if you, and then y'all, if y'all wanna work on the stuff that got discussed, and the next time we bring y'all forward, we'll, we'll have this even more tweaked up again, so...
All right, thank y'all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank y'all.
Uh, insurance, Casey?
Yep, I got Larry and Linda here, normally, I, uh, kinda dread seeing Larry and Linda come by, but today's a, a good one, um, you guys heard it in March, there's big savings, I think there's some high cost claimants coming off the plan, so, I'm gonna let, uh, this gentleman let you know, I mean, you're, you're welcome here when it's this kinda savings, Larry, I, I don't begrudge your name this morning, so...
Good morning, everybody, good to see y'all. My name's Larry Reese with USI. Uh, thank you for your time today, um, I'm, I'm here to, uh, on behalf of Linda, Katie, Samantha, and, and the entire team, did, um, Nate, did I jump in front of you, did you wanna make some opening?
No, you're good, you can, it's all good news this morning.
Okay. It, it is, it is, um, let me make sure I know what... Okay, um, so this is a inventory of the insurance renewals for the upcoming fiscal year, and we've highlighted, uh, um, your, your administrative fees with Blue Cross are in a multi-year fee guarantee, we know that, and there's some Evergreen contracts, the group life and disability are in a contract that doesn't renew until next year, the vision's in a contract that doesn't renew. So, our time together today is focused primarily on the dental, the stop-loss reinsurance, as we know from years past, will be a minute, we have to have ten months of claim, so we'll be revisiting that like we always do towards the end of May. Um, but things are good, uh, the, the next page in our deck is your, uh, big, which Casey alluded to, is a very favorable outcome for you, um, two large claimants are no longer participating in the plan, and, and so that's produced, uh, quite a favorable position for the county to be in, you've kinda weathered that storm, so to speak, for a couple of years, and, and now you're in a good spot. So, uh, that's, that's great news, um, we wanted to request your, uh, consider... So, uh, that's, that's great news. Um, we wanted to request your, uh, consideration on a couple of benefit enhancements. The, the first one is a muscular skeletal program, so think back, knees, hips, shoulders. Uh, what this program does, is Blue Cross Blue Shield leans in with the consumer and tries to help your employee or covered family member with their needs in that area. Whether it's directing care, which these days we call a care navigation, uh, is it the right surgery? Is it the right physician? Is it the right place to have that procedure done? And then, early on, are there some preventative things that could be done, which we could all do, a little more stretching and a little more walking? So, the program is multifaceted in that regard. To turn that program on at Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina, the county would pay them thirty-seven cents per employee per month, so that'd be added to your administrative bill, and that totals about, but based on your current employee size, that's about four thousand dollars a year. And so, the advantage of doing that program is you're helping your employees and covered family members navigate, uh, muscular skeletal problems and, and pain as a result of that. Um, and then the idea is there's some sort of return on investment, uh, based on the current number of, of MSK claims that the county has, depending on the year, somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five. But if the program could effectuate some change on, on about ten percent of those, three or four, they would obviously look at all of them, but all of them might already be doing everything exactly right. Uh, but if they could impact three or four, that would fund the program in its entirety. So, on a thirteen million dollar budget, small, small dollars, but something for your consideration that we think would be advantageous to, uh, to your, to the employees and covered family members. Uh, the, the next program that we have for your consideration is improving the Teladoc access. And so, Teladoc is, like I say in clinics, there are a lot of brand names out there for, for tissues. There are a lot of brand names out there for telemedicine. Teladoc was the original and the first. That's who you use today through Blue Cross. The idea here is that you lower the co-pay, that the ten-dollar co-pay, if that's a barrier for utilization, then let's eliminate that barrier, uh, for a year, maybe two years, and let's see if we can redirect some care. Um, as we all know, not every urgent care visit belongs in an urgent care that could've waited for the office patient tomorrow for primary care, or it could've gone to Teladoc. And then the same with ER visits. Not every emergency visit is appropriate. And so, uh, we do, in connection with Nate and Tony and team, we do a great job of communicating to employees how, how they might wanna self-guided care. Um, sometimes when you have digestive, indigestion problems, you're not sure if you're having a heart attack or not, so the ER's the right place to go, right? Um, some of those just happen, but this is a concerted effort to try to help people make a better decision and eliminate a ten-dollar barrier. Um, so we would be able to promote that, frankly, from a communication perspective would be the advantage, and keep it front of mind, um, for employees. Like, "Hey, remember that Teladoc is free," and so hopefully we could divert some care. Um, if we diverted half of what we had hoped, it would, it would fund half of the program. So, those are the only two, uh, medical improvements, excuse me, improvements to the medical pharmacy program that we have for you this year, um, for your consideration. The, the dental marketing results, and, and here's a, a seven-year history of your premium, and I know this is employee-pay-all, so, so there's no county dollars involved here, but, um, wanted to bring to you today where we are with the dental program, and I think history's relevant. Uh, dental trend during this time period has been about five, depending on what study you read, five or six percent. So, if, if CPI during that time was two and a half to three, dental inflation has been more like five to six percent. So, pretty successful. Uh, your dental program's experience rated, we bid it every three years, and so you see there was a, a five percent up, and then some zeros, and a five down, and then an eight percent up. Um, we have gone to market this year, and the results of this year's marketing came, has come down to either remaining with Delta Dental, your current provider, or moving to MetLife. Uh, we went to several of the largest markets. Uh, you might know the names Ameritas, Cigna, Aetna, they were all included. Um, the, it, the Delta Dental increase is thirteen point six percent, uh, seems like a large increase. That's fifty-nine thousand dollars per year, um, and how that breaks down in employee payroll deductions depends on whether they're enrolled in the high plan or the low plan, and depends on whether they're a single or a family. But the range of financial impact to an employee is from two dollars and fifty-eight cents per month to nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents per month. Um, that was obviously before taxed, um, it's a pre-tax benefit, and I don't know why anybody wouldn't take advantage of that pre-tax, so you could probably take twenty, twenty-five percent off of those numbers and know exactly what the financial impact is to the employee. I'm, I'm sorry for the eye test, that's why Nate and I wanted to show cop, print, printed copies here. I don't know how to zoom in for you, but all the detail is right here. Um, the first two columns are your current bro, program, base and buy-up. The next two columns are renewing with Delta Dental. They just repeat, base and buy-up. You can let your eyes flow to the bottom, and you see the single rate. You have two-hundred-and-twenty-eight employees in the base plan that elect single coverage only, and that's nineteen dollars and three cents, and you skip to the third column, that nineteen dollars and three cents is going to twenty-one sixty-one. That's how you come up with the two, almost three-dollar difference. And so, that process just repeats itself across the page to give you a visual. Bottom line, it's a fifty-eight, uh, fifty-nine thousand dollar increase. The alternative is to move to Delta Dental. That increase is only five point nine percent, and twenty-six thousand dollars. And then MetLife has an alternative at two point eight percent that changes the plan design. They, they both do some interesting things. Um, I'd like to, you know, you might kinda on this page say, "Well, that feels like a little bit of a no-brainer to, to move to Delta Dental, and there's a second-year rate cap." Um, the Delta Dental network match is not quite as good, and that's worthy of kinda peeling the onion back and staring into that data for a second, so let me explain this page to you, 'cause it's important. Uh, total charges under review were eight-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. The, the top twenty providers were a good chunk of that money. So, dentists, we're talking about dentists now, endodontists, dentists, dental care. Uh, Delta Dental Premier, uh, Delta Dental has two layers to their network. They have a PPO and a Premier. Uh, you're very unique, they do it all around the country. It's a good concept. Uh, their Premier network picks up seventy-three percent of those, seventy-three thousand, twenty-three percent of those dollars. Their PPO picks up eighty-eight thousand dollars for twenty-eight percent. So, for a combined network, and remember, in dental, unlike medical, in medical with Blue Cross, I, I wanna say the phone book, but probably ninety-seven percent of doctors join the, the PPO network. In dental, it's not like that. In dental, if the network has sixty-five percent of the doctors, you're doing, dentist, you're doing pretty good. Um, not every dentist signs a contract. Um, so that's why you see fifty-one percent match for, um, Delta Dental, and then for MetLife, you see thirty-one. So, and then we change it from dollars to just transactional counts. The bottom half of that, instead of money, is how many visits, and so you kinda see the frequency side of the equation. Um, what this should suggest to you is that if you made the change to Delta, from Delta Dental to MetLife, there would be disruption between the, between your current employee and, and family mem, covered family member and the dentist. Um, uh, MetLife has just as many dentists, they just don't have the ones that, that your people like to go to, is how I would say that. So, if you changed, the employees would have to find a new dentist, or they could stay at the same dentist. That coverage would now be add a network, and instead of being at a, at a contracted rate of reimbursement where the dentist has already signed a deal that, that, um, prevents them from balance billing, now they'd be able to balance bill your associate, and that, that, your, your employee. That becomes nuisance money. Um, and I've got an exhibit in here to quantify what, what I mean by nuisance money in a minute, but if the difference is thirty-four thousand dollars between Delta Dental renewal and MetLife, it would be my assertion that you, your employees would spend some of that, instead of spending it in payroll deductions, they'd be spending it per occurrence through some, some balance billing, unless they changed dentist. And so, let me, uh, let me walk you through that. Uh, this is, uh, Delta Dental came back and said, "Well, we'd be happy to also offer, uh, a different add-a-network reimbursement. We'll lower our add-a-network reimbursement, and, uh, that'll get the renewal from a thirteen percent increase down to a minus two." And so, that, that sounds good on paper, but again, when you peel back that onion, you end up with this. And so, this would be a similar phenomenon to MetLife, and so let me explain this page. Right now, your add-a-network encounters, um, Premier pays same as in network, so it's a reasonable rate of reimbursement, and so your employees never get, the, the net effect of that is Tony and Casey and Nate never hear about, "Well, why, I'm paying for my dental coverage. How come I gotta pay another thirty-two dollars on a balance bill? I thought I had good insurance." They don't ever hear that, because you don't have that problem right now. If, if we go down this road, we're gonna start hearing that a little bit. That's okay, you just need to be aware of that. Other clients do it, it's not very prevalent. About eight percent on the right there, about eight percent of, um, Delta Dental customers pursue this strategy to take a thirteen percent increase down to a minus two. Um, so these are just four different instances of very common procedures, peri, peri, uh, periodic oral, um, evaluation, a prophylactic adult, uh, amalgam for one surface, and then a crown, uh, porcelain, crown. So, we look at the ninetieth percentile in the Premier, and then if you just looked at the boxed information, the cost-share differential, that nine dollars, um, so, you know, right now, the dentist gets fifty-two bucks in this example, uh, under Premier, they'd only get forty-three. Well, to get the rest of their money, they're gonna balance bill your employer, covered family member nine dollars. And this gonna happen again, twenty-four dollars in the next example, thirty-nine, and then fifty-four. So, that's, uh, that's the math behind the scenes. Uh, I think it's just a, a preference. Uh, Nate, Tony, and I've talked a lot about this. Uh, our recommendation is that, that, by the way, a lot of other bidders couldn't even compete with Delta Dental's thirteen percent renewal. Our recommendation is to stay with Delta Dental, um, and, and not experience balance billing issues. And, um, I would tell you that the dental market has become unstable post, uh, COVID. Remember, all the hygienists had to wear PPI equipment, and they didn't like wearing that stuff, so if they were close enough to retirement, they just retired. And if they didn't, if they were about to go into that industry, they diverted. So, there's a shortage of labor in hygienists. Dentists are having to pay more to get hygienists. And so, that five percent trend is starting to flow through at bigger numbers. It's part utilization and it's part labor cost, but, um, that's why other bidders couldn't be competitive with this, and our recommendation would be to, um, renew with, with, uh, Delta Dental.
Larry, is that just on the buy-up piece? It's not on the flat?
Uh, it, it's actually on, on, yeah, I'm sorry for the eye test, but it's on both. It's two dollars on, uh, the single, and then down there on family is nineteen bucks. That was the range, Casey, from the, the thirteen expressed as a percent, as a dollar increase.
Okay. Nate, you got this right here.
Yeah.
I'll get with you after this over. Just ignore me, I'll get this one.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Um, are, are there, uh, any questions?
Is there weight to track how much, uh, how many complaints they've had on, uh, Delta?
Y'all have had none. Everybody's been, I mean, Nate and I talked about Nate yesterday. I'm stealing his answer, but, yeah.
Yeah, so one of the things that's, you know, led to our recommendation on sticking with the plan we've got is we don't have a lot of balance billing questions, um, or complaints that come up. Uh, I think here in our market, there's just a lot of dentists that, if they're in network, the ninetieth percentile reimbursement covers their fee most of the time. So, there, there's very few providers that we've identified that are balance billing our folks.
I would go with your rest, Nate. I've had, I hadn't had a bit of problem used it, hadn't had a bit of problem with it.
No, the dental's fine. Um, explain this co-pay thing again to me, 'cause I was trying to read. So, is, are we just going away with our co-pay completely for, for everything, or?
On Teladoc for, uh, so, um, the ten-dollar Teladoc co-pay would go to zero dollars, and right now, there's only two things you can do with Teladoc for Davidson County. You can do acute care, so not primary care. They're not a, they're not a substitute for primary care right now. You can't get your physical over the smartphone, but if you got the sniffles and you need an antibiotic, you can use Teladoc for that.
And I got you.
And then the behavioral health one, that you can also, so that's another modality for mental health care, which, um, you know, what you hear on, if you think you have a hard time getting into a primary's office for a routine physical, mental health is same, or if not worse. So, y'all turned that on a couple of years, two, three years ago, and this would just be taking that ten dollars down to zero.
I've never used Teladoc. Has anybody up here ever used it? I think that's something HR or the blast.
Employees do it.
We communicate the heck out of that, and...
I mean, I've never seen the email come through about it on, um...
We were hoping the ten bucks, it was one and eight, so I did, we, we think it's a good strategy to promote again.
Yeah, so one of the things that we've identified in our data is that we just have a, we have a noticeable uptick of urgent care claims, noticeable uptick of ER claims, and Blue Cross tracks the data on the backend and identifies how much of those claims can be shifted to other, um, areas of delivery. So, whether that's a, you know, Teladoc-type solution, um, or not in an urgent care or, um, emergency room setting. So, we think trying to reduce that barrier to the Teladoc benefit, coupled with some additional marketing elements, which Teladoc has given us some additional commitments on some of their marketing. We've got some of those items that'll go into our open enrollment materials to, to highlight that, uh, should hopefully kinda blunt the trend and get folks seeking, seeking those care options.
You definitely need some marketing tips, because again, like I say, I didn't even, I'd forgot all about it, and I'd much rather do that than I had go to an urgent care.
Yeah.
My family uses it all. We have Teladoc.
Nate does your all onboarding a little different than we do ours, when we go in and do our, our re-ups each year? Because that's something that's brought up to us when we go in and do it in person.
Yeah, but an email blast to me is, that's the only way you're gonna get me, okay? I mean, it's just, if I can read it in the email, you know, something catchy, that's what, if I had it for my employees, I'd send it out, email blast, so they could, mm, okay, you know?
You still have, uh, employee meetings, right?
We do.
You got some literature.
Yes, so that's last year, and, and even this year, we, everybody gets a digital copy of the open enrollment booklet, and then I offered, uh, last year and will this year, in-person meetings, as well as kind of a web attendance, since we've got so many employees spread out, and that'll be a focal point if we make this change, you know? Reiterating that Teladoc is there as a solution, but especially if we make this change to zero co-pay, uh, that would definitely be a highlight that we would, would make sure folks are aware of. Uh, and we've also been in discussions with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, because that's a, a part of our medical plan that they manage, about trying to get some additional information on those ID cards that's a touch point that all of our members are getting, uh, just as a reminder that that's like a zero-dollar co-pay. So, if you're on the buy-up plan, it itemizes those things, so we're working with them to get that on there as well.
And when it comes to renewal time to me, and maybe I'm the only one like that, I just check the boxes and send it. I mean, I don't spend much time, um, navigating through. Do, do y'all study your insurance?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, he don't, y'all do, do you? I don't study it, Fred may, I mean...
I got my personal secretary, I think, seven years.
So, so you need to dummy-proof it for people like me with just an email blast that says, "Hey, you know, use Teladoc," you know? I mean, our insurance is what it is, so I don't know that it's any good for me to dive deep into it. I mean, our, our deductibles are what, Casey, do you know?
We got a good program.
Off the top of my head, I had to look at the chart.
I mean, what's our deductible? Five grand, twenty-five hundred?
So, our deductible for employee only on the base plan is twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Now, remember, five hundred of that's offset by your health reimbursement account that's part of the base HRA. Your buy-up is seven-hundred-and-fifty bucks.
Seven-fifty deductible?
So, for your deductible.
So, that's really good, I would say, for industry standards, is...
Our medical...
Top of the line, you know?
Very competitive.
Well, and I, I would say too, um, I think the younger people use the Teladoc. I know my daughter, you know, and I've known several other younger folks tend to use that, um, because they've been to the urgent care and spent so much more money going there. I was gonna ask you about the muscular skeletal thing. Now, this is the other one that you want us to think about, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I was reading through it, and I, and I thought, um, it says, "Go, coaching and care navigation for hip, knee, shoulder, and lower back issues." Okay, uh, when I was working, uh, I guess I checked off whatever, um, with school system and Blue Cross Blue Shield, and that's what I got for coaching and care navigation, because, uh, they, they noticed the medication that I was taking, and they, you know, and so I got a call...
because, uh, they, they noticed the medication that I was taking, and they, you know, and so I got a call from somebody, and they, you know, just verbally worked with me, checked back in to me, have you lost some weight, blah, blah, blah. To be quite honest with you, after I look back on it, I think it was a waste of time, um, to, you know, because I didn't follow their recommendations at the time. But this is an area that so many of us are into in our, in our lot, you know, in our ages. This area is so, is this very expensive for the county to add this? Tell me, tell me.
Twenty, twenty-some cents or something.
Yeah, it's, you have some cents.
Okay, to me, I think this might be a good thing.
I agree.
And they're not, you're not required to follow their recommendations.
Recommendations, no.
The only thing you really avoid is, is that trip down three hour wait at the emergency room.
Right, right. So I, you know, I just wanted to say, I think this is a good thing.
We think it's gonna be a good enhancement to the plan.
So you're for it?
Yes, yes, after, I, I've been, I've been suffering, and nobody knows, so I, I just recently had a, burst a shot, and I feel like a new person.
And marketing that as well, you know, there may be a lot of people use it if they knew they had it.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know a lot about it, so.
One of the good things about that Blue Cross program is that's actually a Blue, Blue Cross-initiated contact. So they're constantly using their technology elements to analyze claims data, and they're reaching out to the members to get them in touch with those care navigation elements to review with them, the network participation. Um, we've had instances with other elements of our care management program where folks have identified they can go see the same provider and have a procedure done at one hospital versus another hospital, and it saves them money. Um, it's, it, oh, it goes way down in even to the, the contracts with hospitals and the, the insurance companies. So, um, I, I think it will be a, a good cost savings opportunity for us to take.
Especially on imaging, you can really save the difference on that.
For sure.
How many, uh, what you group count over sixty-five?
Enrolled in the plan?
Yeah.
Uh, that's a good question.
It's, it's not significant.
It's a handful or less.
Yeah, it's-
When they go sixty-five, it's not gonna be, um, can you say, everything zero anyway?
Correct.
Yeah.
I guess some of those in the plan that was sixty-five was employees that retired prior to us, or prior to-
Retirees, yeah.
Well, we, remember our retiree plan stops when they become eligible for Medicare, so when they turn sixty-five, they're no longer on our plan.
E- even the ones that worked for the county during that period that their healthcare was really-
We just cover them if they are not sixty-five when they retire. If they meet all the criteria, we cover them until they can go on Medicare.
I got you, so if they retire at sixty or whatever, you-
Yes.
I got you. I thought it was from sixty-five, like a supplemental part or something.
Do the, uh, percentages on the FSA, does it stay about the same?
It did, hasn't changed much at all.
I'm telling you, that's, if you don't go with that Teladoc and you get somebody to, to go with the FSA, you, you cut your premium by twenty-five percent right straight out, and, and it's easy to do.
Right.
My Teladoc is a VA, so I don't have to do that.
Right.
But my wife, she has regular insurance, so I take all the, all of the claims that she has and put them on the FSA.
Right, yeah.
And it's, it's twenty-five percent less. And when you got a, uh, when you got a kidney transplant, that can mount up.
For sure.
Okay, if there's no other questions, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion, John.
Second.